Call the regular council meeting to order here at City Hall, April 17th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. We have any additions to the agenda this evening? Okay, moving on to citizens' comments, actually, Ray, would you mind providing a blessing for us this evening?
Yes, pray. Father, we thank you again for the opportunity to come to conduct the business of the city. We pray, Lord, for these men and ladies as they discuss the issues that will arise. Pray, Lord, that you would give them wisdom. We thank you for their service, their time, and the dedication that they give to you. For us in your sons, precious family, pray. Amen.
Thank you. All right, moving on to citizens' comments. Does anybody have any comments this evening?
Just for information purposes, Sunday night, St. John Hudson Municipal Alliance did have the appreciation service for our first responders. There were about 70 people in attendance. According to people that talked to me, it was a good, good service. And for information purposes, we have 55 first responders. City and county with the county EMS and the city and county fire department and Hudson Fire Department and law enforcement, including the county sheriff. We had, there were 55 first responders that were recognized. Certificates were available for them and have since been passed out. And there were 540 years of service for those 55 individuals. The shortest was one year and the longest was 37 years.
Very good.
Thanks for doing that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Jamie?
Oh, yeah, maybe.
Well, that's what's supposed to be there. Supposed to get you all taken care of. Are there any other citizens' comments this evening?
Jamie, let me go do this here.
Yep.
I'm representing the Rec Commission tonight. Want to ask council, what is, do you see the direction of the Dillons Building? What do you kind of foresee going in there? Or if you see any type of retail or anything of that nature that might be going in there? If, I don't know, has there been any discussion about what that building might be used for?
There's been some discussion, but nothing really concrete.
Okay. I want to throw our two cents in. The Rec Commission would certainly like to obtain that building. We would, I talked to Lisa Cornwell a couple of weeks ago, and she was looking into a grant, a hundred thousand dollar grant. With that money, we'd be able to use for the infrastructure in there, help getting it all, make it look nice, and also with the outside of it. I know the Rec Commission, with my board, we would be available, we would have some monies available to help, you know, with the outside of it as well, to address it up. And basically, just kind of move it from where we're at to there, to over here into the new building, if that would be a possibility. Like to, of course, promote downtown. There's parking, there's a shell. Well, you know, we're needing some storage space, office space. Like, we're also thinking, you know, possibly a game room for kids to be able to participate in some of the activities there. I don't know, I talked to Jeff a little bit about it. We went and looked at it, oh, about a week ago or a week or two ago.
Yeah.
And I don't know, you have anything to add to that?
No, he made some comments about some different things that could be available in there, you know, some different ideas about, you know, whether it was small facilities for the kids or even as far as maybe even some lanes of bowling alley, depending on how much room and that, you know. And the upstairs, he was kind of at a loss for now to, to wait and see what kind of access he could get up there. Because right now, the only access would be through the back stairwell where the, where the loading stuff was, and then up through the front here, which for people that maybe don't walk so well, might be a little rough. So, you know, we tossed around a lot of things. And he had some great ideas. And so I told him that the only way that we would know would be to bring it to you guys and let you kind of decide and feel out and see what you thought about his ideas, so.
And part of it too, like, you know, if that would be a possibility, have a little small game room over there that I would like to try and open up on a Friday night, like 9:15, 11:15, do like a fifth quarter, you know, for football games and basketball games for kids to go in there. I mean, it wouldn't be every single Friday. I mean, we would pick, we want it to be special, so we pick different times to do that. Also, utilizing some of the, you know, doing some of our activities over here in the square. You know, if it get rained out, I mean, we could do some yard games and stuff like that. Maybe put up volleyball net, you know, and do some after-school stuff as well. But if we had rain out, we could come into the building across the street. Part of our problem is we just don't have enough space. I mean, our hands are tied. If you'd come over there, like for Easter egg hunt, we did our flashlight egg hunt, you know, it was, I thought I had to lose 30 pounds just to walk in through there, and that was kind of hard to do, okay? Because we just didn't have enough room to go through there. But that's kind of what we're looking at, and I didn't know if that'd be a possibility, something you guys entertain, possibly looking at.
I think it's a great idea. I'd like to see something go in over there.
As far as, like, the windows, I'd like to try and do something like, like how Trey did over there. I mean, make it a pretty attractive building. That's kind of what I, I mean, I was thinking and just also visiting with Jeff, possibly moving those doors to the south side because those, when blows, I know when Dillons would go through there, I mean, that, break that door all the time. I'd just do some of those type of things, but that's kind of what we're looking at doing.
I agree with Ryan. I think it's a fantastic idea, bring some more life to the square and it'd be a more adequate space for, for the Rec Commission. I think it's a great idea.
I think Nick's deal too, you know, he, we had talked and we'd had some plans earlier about him wanting to build a building. But the investment, you know, the investment that he would put into it would be far smaller here. The money would be more usable in a building structure that's already here than it would be trying to find a spot big enough to do the things, you know, and he might not be able to incorporate everything in there that we plan to do. But, you know, it also, I know at different times, they've, they've had scheduling problems between stuff that he had going on, stuff that goes on in the skating rink, that kind of stuff. And really, you know, basically, he's tied to an office over there, and that's basically all he has. So, he had some great ideas, I thought, and put some life into that building.
In '09, we actually looked at, over there by the tennis courts, you know, dealing with the school, and so we, we started going through that. We hired an architect out of Salina, and it was a $1.8 million building. Okay, we don't need a $1.8 million rec center in St. John. It would be ideal if we could, but we withdrew from that. We were looking more like a morton shed building. But then, we kind of withdrew from that a little bit as well, just for the money purposes of it. And I think that'd be feasible for us to try and do something here. So, I don't know, you guys need to have more discussion in regards to that. That would be great. And then I'll wait on coming back, what, May 1st or whatever, and talk to you.
Do you have more? I mean, my main thing is that, as long as it's not just like storage and offices, if you guys can have, if, like you said, you're throwing out ideas, you don't have a plan for sure, but if you can have something offered to kids in the community, I'm all for that.
Yeah.
It's not just going to be office and storage.
No, it's not going to be just like that. Want to put a multipurpose room in there, where we can do our dance and gymnastics and stuff over there as well. I also want to do, put a game room in there, because, you know, there's, when they have professional days at the school, where are the kids going? You know, I mean, I want them to come and be part of, come over to the game room and do different things over there, you know? I mean, that's what I want them to do. But no, I'm not looking at just making it office space and, you know, I mean, that type of thing. I mean, we could also do after-school bingo with, with those kids. The programming's unlimited. I mean, but the problem is, I just don't have the space to do it. So, yeah, I totally agree with you, that's not even a purpose.
Something that you really won't know what you'll do in there until you purchase it, or could you bring a plan to it?
Oh, no, we can bring a plan. I can get a plan, I mean, put together. Because I want to have like a, well, I mean, there's, I know just throwing it out, like in front, I might have an office space, a game room, a multipurpose room, where they can go in, do dance and gymnastics and that type of stuff. Because right now, we have all the mats and everything. I mean, if you've been over the Witt Center, it's all over there on that east side of the wall. It's just, like, to get it out of there, else free up more room. You know, like, a game room, and then maybe up top, you know, you know, it just depends, you know, what requirement we're going to need to have. I mean, like, an elevator to get people up there. Or if we do senior activities up top in the upstairs, or if we just had a senior stuff on the first floor, are we required to have an elevator? And, but we do, you know, things for the top floor for the kids. But then you also have, you know, adaptive kids, you know, might have, need wheelchairs and that type of stuff to get up there. So, those are some of the things that, you know, be curious, so.
So, is that a thing that you're, you're planning on having an area for the senior center as well?
No, I mean, we could do bingo and, I mean, just anything really in there. But no, as far as like a senior center, I mean, no, I mean, you know, if we did come over there, I don't know, that would free up more room for them over there, you know, as well. But, I mean, as far as the seniors, I don't know.
I'd certainly entertain it. I'd think about it and maybe get back, when we have full council.
Okay. I'll come back, May 1st, and just have some type of plan drawn out.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much.
The only thing I do want to let you guys know is, we are working with the grocery store. I don't know what timeline we're looking at, but I do know that he might be storing some stuff until the grocery store is built.
We gave them permission to use that space to put some of their equipment in there.
But, I mean, the, the process is going to take a while.
Yeah, I mean, we're not looking at, on our side, not looking at next month. I mean, yeah, it's, so.
So, I just want to make that known that.
So, next, next time when I come, I'll bring a floor plan-ish, you know, I mean, to look at.
Great, excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you, Dick.
Are there any other citizens' comments?
I didn't know for sure if I was on the agenda, but if I was, I wasn't missing it.
No, I think we have you for the next meeting to come back and talk with us, or the 15th. May 15th is the meeting that we were going to need an update from you.
Okay.
Yep.
Because a lot of things are going on and changing.
Do you want us to maybe call you with a reminder?
That would be really sweet of you.
I can make a note, and we can give you a call to remind you of when we have you on.
Okay. Did you have anything you wanted to add to?
Oh, I just wanted to come back for the next meeting, and then we'll, we'll step up a little.
Cool, cool.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens' comments? Move on to consent agenda, approve the minutes of the regular council meeting, April 3rd, 2018. That was the copy that you received on the table that's updated. Also, the appropriation ordinance 041718 and the amount of $37,126.53. Have a motion?
Still moved. Oh, wait, we need to.
I'd like to ask Adam, looking through this Fisher Service Center. Diagnostic computer scan, complete lubing oil, filter service. I thought it was kind of the understanding when we got the four-post lift that you guys were going to service your own vehicles. Is this one?
We were, that one was scheduled, it was already scheduled, so that one was one that just happened right before that got put in, so.
Okay.
But, yeah.
I guess I was, I was thinking it was like the end of March, but, I don't know, just as long as, as.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the plan, is the oil and stuff will be done there, and all, you know, major mechanical and stuff like that will still go.
Right.
You know, to there, yeah, that's.
I just wanted to make sure that you understood.
Yep.
Cool, thank you. Right, I have a motion on the table.
Second.
A motion and a second by Bryant, and a second by Christie. Any other discussion? All in favor? All those carries thirty. Moving on to housing violations.
You guys should have a letter from the owner of those, I guess, the three, two buildings is, is the same individual, Bob Trulliano. And it's been a letter to council from his attorney that I received earlier this week. And then Jeff went and took pictures, and I visited with Jeff this, I don't know, this afternoon.
About noon.
About what he would recommend to council. And you, you said you'd seen.
We're seeing progress. Jamie and I went down and looked yesterday, snapped a few pictures, but, you know, the stuff's getting cleaned up. It is, it, to his word, he, he is doing some repair on there, so we're making headway. It looks better than some of the other properties that we've been looking at and, and paying attention to. So, you know, I, I think he's headed in the right direction. I think he means what he says, that he's going to go ahead and get them cleaned up. We see some, we see some drastic change, so. I would recommend to the council to go ahead and give him a little leeway and give him time. You know, I would give him a time to have it done. I wouldn't stretch it out for six months, but, but I think he's headed the right direction, so.
And that's, that would be my suggestion, is just to give additional time. But one of the things that his attorney requested is, is basically a list, Jeff, of what you would consider a violation of city ordinance on the individual properties right now, so that he can.
I don't, I don't really see any violations, per se. I mean, it's in the repair state. I mean, the stuff has been cleaned up. I wouldn't say all of it, but I'd say over half of it has been, and I think as weather permits, that, you know, he's not any worse than some of the other places we got. He is making headway.
So, he's, he's taking care of the ordinance-type issues?
The, the repairs that, that, that he told us that he was going to do, most of them are either completed or in a stage of completion. I haven't seen him this last week or so. He may have been down there, but I haven't been that way. But somebody has, went ahead and finished the sheeting on the roof, on the porch, and that stuff. And as the letter states, as the weather gets a little warmer and he can put shingles on, I have no doubt about he's not going to do that, so.
Maybe what we need to do, I'm just thinking out loud, is the initial, and I can't remember which of the health department individuals looked at his house without looking at the letter, but.
I think both of them.
It's kind of go, take that letter and go line by line on that letter to see what he's done and not done.
Okay.
And maybe that's the way to handle it.
That might be the way to. Is this something where we need to do 60 days, kind of like we have with the others?
Yeah, I would just, I mean, my thought is that, like Jeff said, if you give them too much time, then they're going to get it all done the week before. I would just.
I think from the point of rental properties, he probably wants to get them fixed up and get them rented.
I do know he's up, 4:15, he's already got somebody that wants to move in here in the next month or two. Which doesn't matter, I can't do anything on the inside because the weather's been too cold.
I, I see, I see progress down there. I think you should give him 60 days, you know, and maybe revisit it, but I think in 60 days, he'll be ready to rent, if he gets on him, so.
As long as we see progress, that's fine. I mean, you're just making progress.
Yeah. I mean, like I said, I see more progress there than I have in a lot of these.
Me and Mr. Winslow, he's been doing interior work, I've been doing all the exterior construction. And I've been doing all the cleanup around the yards.
Okay. We weren't sure whether he was.
Between him and his wife being in and out of the hospital so much lately.
I know he said he was going to try making it tonight, but he, I guess, some, his wife is still in the hospital or something like that.
Well, so I would say, check that list off and see what still needs done.
Okay.
Let's send him that list.
If I could catch him down there, I'll be with him.
And give him, and give him the 60 days with that list being completed. That's what council's thinking.
Within the next week or so, I'll have shingles on that roof, that porch that I've redone. I'll put you in the next week or so.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's, are you okay with me?
It does look.
I'm driven by, it does look really good.
It looks a lot better.
So, as far as the list goes, and have a, let's say that the list has to be completed by 60 days.
From the data in the letter that's sent out, so once we get that.
And remember with him, we never even adopted the resolutions, so. We, basically, you'd be saying 60 days, and then we'll drop condemning your property, whereas the other ones we went as far as.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need to vote on that, or is consensus good?
No, consensus on that.
I'll wait to see the list, we'll get it taken care of.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to department head and committee reports, Grand Administrator Lisa Cornwell.
I spoke with her earlier. Her and I are going to be meeting, I think it's the 25th, and then we're going to meet with Sid the 27th for the sacred house to school stuff, so that's still in the process. I think she said she had one more thing to get before we met with him, so.
All righty, moving on, Police Chief Adam Saylor.
Well, speaking of progress, the 15th of last month was the first day of we'd start handing out letters for junk vehicles. So, I went back, I went today and checked on all the ones that we had delivered then. And everybody we delivered letters to is in compliance.
Wow.
So, and then we've got, you know, we spent probably three or four days total, really kind of hitting the first rounds. Within the next few days, we'll continue going off and marking the ones off the list that are in compliance, and then we'll issue citations to the other ones that aren't and go from there. But I'm, I'm pretty pleased with, people have taken it well and taken it seriously.
Very good.
Very good.
Thank you, Adam.
Can people train in their vehicles, or check in advantage of that, or they just?
That, we haven't, we, yeah, we, I hadn't, we were choosing to, we were choosing to basically kind of say that for, for the court. When, when they appear in court, then that's when the information will be given to them, to where they have that opportunity. And then, you know, that'll, that'll kind of help, I guess, not, maybe not the right words, but give them an out or, or an avenue on how to do that in a formal setting. But I, I really think the, you know, them knowing that if it's, if they're, if they don't comply within the 30 days, that they could receive a citation, have to appear in court, is going a long ways to, to put them in compliance. So, the ones that I know of, you know, like, one, one issue was just the fact that the vehicle didn't have a tag and insurance, so they renewed the tag, put the insurance on it, and it was back in compliance. It was a minor mechanical issue as to why it was sitting there, so. The other ones, I don't, the cars have disappeared, so. Couldn't tell you where they, I don't know where they went, I just know they're not there.
That's good. That is good.
And we've got, if you're driving around, I will have Jay Roberts down at the pound doing some painting and stuff like that. One of the things in our last year's inspection that we had to address was rust and stuff like that on the, on the pound, so. He's going to go down there and hopefully get that taken care of for us.
What else, Adam?
That's it.
Anything for Adam?
Yep.
Fire chief, Sam Rivers.
Anything for him? Nope. Okay.
City clerk, Miss Jane Getty, Mrs. Dick.
I did get married.
Yes, she did.
Um.
Long time ago.
The only thing I have is, I wanted to let you guys know that we bought four new speakers for Jubilee. We're going to try to get the sound around the square a little bit more, so I just wanted to update you on that. I have the schedule pretty much out. The first one was a little bit wrong, but now it should be good. So, everything's coming in line pretty well. I think we have everything ready to go, except for the burnout competition, if anyone wants to volunteer to help with that.
Just to clarify, on the speakers for everybody, those were purchased out of what fund?
Um, I, we paid for that completely out of the Jubilee fund.
So, the donated monies?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. So.
To, kind of to add to the speakers that we already had.
Yeah, basically, to update you on that, back when we initially bought the new stuff, the plan was to go with like four to start, and the city clerk at that time and I kind of decided with money where it was and the fund we were going to take it from, we didn't want to exhaust that. So, we just went with two at that time, and then had the intention of a year or two later, go back in and get another set. Well, when Jamie brought up to me about, hey, what can we do to make it sound better because we just don't have enough? I said, well, I would recommend that we go with probably a little more than we need so we don't need to revisit this later. Plus, we won't know until we get an actual event out there with Carnival and all the noise and all the people eating it up and everything like that. So, we did a little test last night, and it was a pretty fair test. And one of these Saturdays before the event, we're going to go out there and set it up as if it were the event, and make sure everything's working good, and put those dollars to good use to make the event better for everybody that's going to be coming to the event. We think that'll really improve the experience for that.
I could do it all the way down my ass.
I don't remember how much we started with, but as of the other day, we were over $10,000 in the Jubilee fund, so.
Which is like five times what they normally have.
I'm pretty, pretty pleased with the outpour of support and, and work that we've been doing.
You guys have been excited.
It's pretty exciting, so. And I think all these extra events are helping with that, too, so.
This is the most I've seen this community excited about the Jubilee in a long time, so kudos to you and your girls in the office.
As long as we keep them excited and bring them all in. The Rabies Clinic occurred last night. Was a really good turnout. Bruce got through them. We're going to tweak it a little bit next year. The preregistration works wonderful. It's just getting people to utilize that. We had a big long line, and then, you know, our preregistration, we let them come, just because they preregistered, so.
Come right in.
Yeah, we're going to do that a little, I don't know how we're going to do it, but.
I'd say, the only way you, did you advertise that just like on social media? Did you put in a flyer? Did you do?
Um, I think both. We tried to do a text, a flyer and social media.
I'd say, there are some people who are older that didn't have any access to some of that stuff, and they were kind of disappointed that they, they didn't quite understand the process. So, maybe next year, sending out a couple of reminders in the city bill, or putting maybe a little tiny ad in the paper or something. Don't, you know, maybe that would help something out, I don't know. How many, what, did you have a rough count on the numbers that we served?
Probably in between 50 or 60. I think it was down a little bit from last year, but it was still pretty good turnout. So, I think, um, no. Stephanie Smith messaged me a little bit ago. She will be coming to the May 1st meeting, but she was wanting to know if she could start looking for applicants for Life Guard. I think she said she needs to hire two. So, I told her that I would request permission for.
So, she has current people coming back?
Correct.
And then she wants to add to, to fill? Okay.
Do you see a problem with her looking right now before the next meeting? I don't think you are.
Bring her recommendations to hire to the next meeting? What else?
No, I don't think anything.
I had a couple of compliments I wanted to add under your port here, just from talking to some people here recently stating about the office here and the attitude here, and they really appreciate being able to come in and see friendly faces, and they just, a lot of people have complimented that this last year or so, other than years past, that it's just really, really refreshing and nice, and they really appreciate the friendly staff and, and your willingness to help and listen, so I wanted to pass that along to you guys.
Thank you. I'll pass it to the group.
I've also heard good things about other departments, but I'll share those other Okay, that's it for you, Jamie. We'll move on to City Superintendent Jeff.
The only thing I have is, and I failed to tell you at last council meeting, that Melvin hauled in past his Class II water operators license, so now we have two Class II water operators, which is a kind of a relief. You know, here the last year or so, the state's pushed really hard for more samples and more testing, and it's kind of following along with, partially with what Jim went through at the last meeting, but also to make sure that the water quality is getting better year or so, the state's pushed really hard for more samples and more testing, and it's kinda following along with partially with what Jim went through at last meeting, but also to make sure that the water quality is getting better all the time. We're getting into a season where nitrates are, are very critical as they start growing on the water table, so, um, I was glad to see that he passed it, but, uh, he worked really hard to do it. It's a tough test to take, so. Other than that, I don't have anything, so.
I did, uh, I did make compliments before the meeting about the guys trimming trees and everything. I had the opportunity to actually walk across the street and talk to guys, and they're getting those widow makers out of there and.
Yeah, I think they're all cleaned up. I believe they are. He'd intended only use it one day, and then I think that he was even gonna save a trip back to Great Bend. I think Jay was gonna take it back, so. We could've got our trucks in there, but they'd have been tough on the grass, tough on the sprinklers, so this was the better way to do it, so.
Yeah, I was over there watching with my student, and, uh, they did a fantastic job over there, so.
I'll pass it along to them in the morning. Thank you very much.
Grant Park's looking good too, Jeff, just letting you know. David or whoever.
We get some warm weather. You know, we're gonna work on the corners a little bit. Uh, Jamie and I picked up, in fact, we, we went to a CDVG meeting in Newton today, and when we come back through, we bought a couple of flower pots. So we're gonna put some pots on the corners, and this year, we're a little late. We're gonna try and, and start planting perennial flowers, flowers that will come back, and bushes that will come back every year. And of course, being this late, it's hard to get started with them, so, we're gonna purchase some flowers through the lumberyard. Donna always has a pretty good selection, and that way we'll have some color for this year, you know, and, and, uh, then starting in the fall through the winter, we're gonna start working some perennials, so when we have time to be able to get on the list and get some stuff, so we can get it here in time to plant it for next spring, and hopefully have some growth that is colorful all through the summer, so. I tell you, the guys have really busted their fannies on there. I know they've, they've worked really hard, and we're, we're just getting warmed up. We're gonna make mistakes, you know, we're not gardeners. We're not green thumb guys, but we're gonna give her a shot. And, uh, hopefully it will be better than just bushes.
Yeah.
So.
Just observing, uh, uh, David and Steve over there on the corner right next to Tiger Town, that one, that looks really good, so, kudos to them.
We picked up two flower pots today, and if we see what we like, you know, no more expensive than they are, we're gonna try and do something like that, maybe a little bit different venue on every corner, so with some different colors, some different growths, so. We'll see how we get along, so, anyway, thank you very much.
What else for Jeff?
I'm a little curious, how are we gonna water the flowers? Are you guys?
They got water. There's water down both sides of there. You bet there is. We put it in when we did the sidewalks.
Alrighty.
Yep, there is. All the way to the north end. Yep, and we got two new trees on the east side we planted earlier for the two that had died, so, and the guy's been, and, you know, we didn't wanna turn the water on up until now, and so they've been watering them with buckets all as long as it's been warm enough, and they're leafing out, so.
What kind of trees are those? Someone asked me.
Pardon?
What kind of trees are those?
They're a Japanese tree of some sort. I can't, I'll tell ya.
Someone asked me and I.
Are they a cherry blossom?
You know, I, I can't, they do have, they do have a, a, a white flower to them. I don't know. I'll have to ask David. I'm sure he's got it over in his office, but. You know, and, and eventually in the square, we're gonna try and get some of those bushes and those rose bushes out, and go back to some perennial flowers. You know, when, when I first went to work here, for years, we had peonies in there that would bloom during Memorial Weekend, stuff like that. Just some different color to stage it out through the summer, I think, so. Trial and error, study and talk, you know? And, and I've kinda enlisted Mary Beavely a little bit. Mary's got the greenest thumb of anybody I know. I cornered her the other day, and I said, if, when I upset you, if I picked on you, and she said, no, not at all. She's more happy to help, so. You know, and I know Ryan's wife, she's, she's got a green thumb too. She does a really good job, so. You know, we'll take all the volunteer help and advice that we can get, because, um, I think we need to see some color in it. The guy's been working on the big flower bed in the north park. Uh, we've bought some, some perennial, uh, flowering plants for up there, and we'll buy some more as time goes on, but, uh, we're gonna try and liven it up and give it some color, so. We're even gonna try and dye the, the mulch. So, we, uh, we wanted some, we wanted to see that mulch red instead of maybe that, you know, we bought those two, I don't know, some of you have been on the council while, we bought two loads out of Pratt here a few years back when we did the round the swing sets and that stuff, and trying to buy colored mulch is terribly expensive. And so I was sitting home the other night, like I tell David, picking my nose and really doing nothing, and so I was just looking on the computer at some of that stuff. And there was a guy that was dying that mulch with a, with a concentrate in the spray, so. I, I caught him at work the other morning and showed him, and instead of spending five or six or seven hundred dollars on mulch, we bought a thirty-dollar jug of, uh, a dye, and it dilutes with water, and we're gonna try it. You know, if it looks terrible, we'll cover it up with brown, we'll do something else, but but for thirty bucks, we figured we could make a mistake, you know, but it might, it might be something that turns out we can give it more color. Yet, there's a hundred different colors you can make it, so. Might be kinda wild, but we're gonna have a little test run and see. We're just a bunch of guys that are really trying. You know, my boys work hard. They really do. Uh, they got, all of them got a heart of gold. There isn't anything that I don't think that they'd rather be doing. They work good together. And, uh, we just wanna see some change and a few smiles on some faces, so. We're gonna give it a shot, so, anyway.
Do you plan to start tearing into the pool before too long?
We've been working on it some. Uh, we're not gonna, we may cut one valve out of there for now, but after David talked to Stephanie a little bit and kinda got some synopsis on how some things are working, we're gonna try and, and do some things a little bit different. We're seeing, we're hearing some things that, uh, maybe weren't quite the way they had been previously. We're gonna adjust some valves, we're gonna plug some stuff off, and we're gonna try and push that water to the east end, get some water in that baby pool, get some better circulation. And then the last day that she's open, she's gonna let us know the next day we're gonna tear into it. If there's anything we need to do, we're gonna do it next fall before we're done. So that we can cut it open while we still got water in the pool, and then we can test it, so. She wanted water in it by the fourth to start training, so that cuts us down to a couple of weeks, so we're really gonna have to kinda hump to get everything going and try and please her, so. Anyway, but, you know, it, at worst case, it'll circulate like it did last year, but we think we've got some ideas after seeing it that we might be able to help her, so, anyway.
I was curious.
I think that's.
We're gonna give it a shot and see.
I think that's a fair idea to use it while it's full.
Yeah.
Know what you're.
Yeah, she wants, you know, always in the past, I know back when the old guys worked here that I worked for, why, they wouldn't fill it till the last minute 'cause they didn't wanna take care of it. Well, it is kind of a pain, you know, if the wind blows and stuff, and then it gets traction, but she's been really good about really keeping an eye on it from the time we fill it, so. We're gonna try and, and, and fulfill our wishes and get it filled as close to the fourth as we can, and, uh, well, that'll give us time to do some testing on some valves and stuff too. We know we have one broken valve in there that's either te- it's either completely shut or it's completely open, one of the two. But, uh, you know, we can make it work as good as it did last year, and then we'll chase everything else, but. Anyway.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
City Attorney John.
Jamie, is that Cuébalo Novevo? Was that supposed to be alcohol stuff? You want us to talk about that one?
Sure. It's not supposed to be an oil business anyways.
You, uh, guy, the city has ordinance related to, um, clubs, and you have ordinance is related to the sale of retail liquor for consumption on premises, but you have no ordinance related to regular liquor by the drink. Not to say that somebody couldn't open up a bar in, in St. John if they wanted to, but, um, you charge fees for every other type of facility. You don't have anything for charge of a separate St. John permit for those types of liquor by the drink. And I, and probably because, and I don't know when, I, I noticed on the Department of Revenue's website that that Stafford is a, is not a dry county, so I don't know when, um, that came, that passed, and it was probably just not updated after that.
It's a couple of years ago, I believe.
So.
Liquor by the drink?
Yeah, but.
Yeah, and I, I.
Yeah, it's a couple of years ago, I think.
I couldn't find the history on it. I, I didn't look very hard, but, um. So, yep, need to update your ordinances, and, and basically, they have to get biannual permits from the state, um, and at that time, they would come in and pay, I think that's two hundred dollars or whatever it was, squeaks.
Yeah, well, I think there's two different levels.
Okay. Whatever it is, it, they would pay that so that everybody that is on the same playing field, so to speak. So if you want me to, I can prepare that for the next meeting. I mean, I think it's probably a no-brainer, but. Like I said, there's nothing that keeps them from getting the state permits and doing what they wanna do now. Uh, there's just no corresponding city permit, and you guys are allowed to have separate city permits. They still have to follow all the rules as to where, um, they can locate. They can't be within a hundred feet, I think, of a church in.
Hundred and twenty?
Is that from any boundary line or front face of the business, or?
Boundary to boundary.
Boundary to boundary.
Probably is how I'd have to read that.
Eighty feet. Eighty feet is what the distance is.
I guess what we're saying is it's kinda close, so. I guess the state goes over that or something, or?
No, no, that, that's, they have to follow the, the city zoning rules regardless of whether it's the state isn't gonna come out here and measure anything.
It's not a s- yeah, it's the hundred and twenty feet is a, the city ordinance, not, that's not state mandated.
Well, with Cuébalo Novevo, there isn't a variance on that. I mean, we put that in place when they first applied for a cereal malt beverage license over there, and they were right across the street from the First United Methodist Church.
I don't know anything about that.
Well.
I'll have to do some.
I guess what I'm saying is we just need to check into it before we make any steps on it.
Right.
I mean.
They've had it before. They've had, they've sold beer in there before.
Right, that's, that's, the laws for that are different than, than liquor by the drink, because cereal malt beverage is just beer.
Yeah, three-two.
Three-two beer, and then the liquor by the drink is hard, you know, was considered hard alcohol and stuff like that, and, and actually, ABC, which is the Department of Revenue, doesn't even govern cereal malt beverage. Only, that's only governed by city ordinance.
Yeah, it's my understanding that they're gonna stop making cereal malt beverage too. Because it's gonna affect your taxes. Because cereal malt beverage isn't taxed as sales tax, not liquor tax. And so when they switch from, and I don't know, probably not gonna affect St. John much, but when they switch to eliminate the three-two, and it's, and now they're only selling liquor, so. Liquor taxes are collected by the state, they're not collected by the, the city, so. Some larger cities are gonna see a loss of tax revenue. I don't know. If it affects St. John anymore.
So what you're speaking to for Cuébalo is, is the liquor by the drink?
That, that's my understanding. That's what they're applying for, because there was a switch in ownership. Is that correct?
They're just asking for a cer- cereal malt beverage. The new Mexican restaurant
Oh, okay.
is inquiring about a liquor license, so I told them they needed to go talk to the Department of Revenue. 'Cause that's not what we deal, like, we don't deal with that. They need to
Right. At, at this point, we do not deal with that.
Right.
Wrong. You can't deal with it now anyway.
Yeah. The way John explained it was, they'll apply for it, and then we'll get notification, and then we, there's a process that we can go through.
Making sure it goes within the
Yeah.
zoning issues.
So, but where they're running into an issue at Cuébalo is because of the church, correct?
For cereal malt.
Because that's what they're applying for, right?
The cereal malt beverage, uh, variance, that, that, shouldn't that still, um, apply?
I don't know. I guess I.
Yeah, I think all they do is just renew it, isn't that?
Well, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Do you remember when that was?
Jeff, do you remember when that was? God, that was several years ago.
Yeah, it's been plenty of years ago, but it was, like you said, it was just cereal malt.
Right.
You know, hard liquor would be different, and like you said, if you throw my alcohol, all beverage can throw it. They've had, they've had cereal malt beverages.
Highways Cuébalo.
And I had no idea. I assumed when I saw Cuébalo that that was the one applying for a liquor license, but that is not.
It's, yeah, it's just the cereal malt beverage.
For Cuébalo.
Cuébalo isn't doing anything.
No, they're doing the cereal malt.
Just renew your cereal malt.
Cuébalo is doing cereal malt, the new one is doing the liquor, and he thought that Cuébalo was doing liquor. Have they? So they've continued to get their cereal malt beverage license out there, you think?
At Cuébalo?
Yes.
No, I don't.
They have not.
I believe that.
Been back and forth.
Yeah, I kind of think.
I know they don't sell beer out there, but, yeah, I don't ever remember them selling beer.
They did.
They did it one time.
But, and they stopped. I didn't know if they still had a certificate, you know, like.
You have to be a, I think there's an issue about being a citizen and applying, which is for all levels of, of alcohol sales. And, and so the owner wasn't able to apply for, I think, was the issue the last time. Unless I'm mixing up restaurants again.
No.
Oh, you're correct.
That's right.
You were right on that.
So they are not selling, but they are now requesting, correct?
Correct, and it's my understanding that they used to have one however many years ago.
So what do we need to do to make that work?
I was not prepared to address cereal malt beverage stuff, so let me.
I can answer that.
Go, yeah, go ahead.
Basically, for the, for the city ordinance, they just have to pay the fee, and then they submit their application, and the police department does a background check, um, to satisfy the state statute and stuff like that, and that was, um, the hangup last time, is the individuals that applied for didn't have citizenship, and that's a requirement.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's really, it's, it's a pretty simple process. Like I said, it's paying the fee, filling out the application. If everything jives, then you're getting out.
It, it, for, since no license, so the issue for the sale of retail, at retail means cereal malt beverage on premises, which is what they want, uh, which are located in areas not zoned for it, and then it says it shall be unlawful to sell or expense at retail any cereal malt beverage at any place within the city limits that is within a hundred and twenty-foot radius of any church or school. And that is, that is not state, that is city law, so if that's the case, then it would have to be a repeal or change of that ordinance.
But, but, Mark, I said, that's already been done.
They did that several years ago.
And, and I, I don't know, I mean, I.
Right, right.
This book was given to me.
To where the whole radius problem.
Quite a while. The radius problem was taken care of. It was taken care of. That was the whole reason for the variance, is because we were, they were still within feet of the church, so.
You're, you're talking about zoning variance. This is, this would be, the hundred and twenty-foot radius would still apply, un- unless the, the zoning commission gave them some kind of exception to the hundred and twenty radius, and I'm not sure how you would even do that. And I guess we can look at the application, but, but they're just renewing it?
No.
No.
This is one.
They're reapplying.
The variance isn't in there?
No, it's a, it's a blanket exception.
It's not in the city code, I know that.
It wouldn't be in the city code. It, it, if there was a zoning issue and they came and they, they, they applied to change, and, and if the code, the zoning code allows for them.
Can you give me a year?
I'll look back through the stuff I've got to see if there was a variance anywhere, but, but it'd been there, like Adam said, six, seven years, I suppose. It's been quite a while. After it changed hands and really turned into a Mexican restaurant is when they applied for the cereal malt then. And, and it was, I know that there was a variance of some sort that was given to them because of the footage, but I can't tell you what it was. I'll have to look back through my stuff.
That's not a zoning issue, though. That's just a, I mean, that's in city code, that's not in the zoning code. So I'm not sure how they, they did that. The easiest way would be just to repeal the hundred and twenty-foot. Reduce it or whatever.
I know whatever it was, the council wanted to approve it.
Well, I don't remember if there was anyone from the church that came down here and protested against that.
I believe Anna Minus did.
Okay, yeah, no, you mentioned, yeah, I think you're right.
Because the issue you're gonna have is you can't arbitrarily apply
No way.
a hundred and twenty-foot radius to some people and not others. Somebody comes in here and they wanna put a bar right next to a church, you're not gonna be able to enforce it then, and that.
Right, you pretty much have to deal with it. You can't just say you can do it if you can.
And I don't know how many cities have this kind of thing. I really don't.
How do you, how do you determine a hundred and twenty feet?
Property.
Property to property. Property to property, yes.
So do you see a problem with doing without it for everybody?
Like I said, I don't know how many, it's definitely harder in a small town or something like that. I don't know, like, candidly, I've seen it dealt with strip clubs. I've not seen.
Do you think it could've been something just in council meeting, and then they made a motion, and it just not got changed?
If they did.
Does I have a little, yeah, sure?
No.
No, we have one year.
I just think we need to I just think we need to, we need to be business friendly and, and work with them, they've been really good to us.
Jamie, I've been around two thousand.
I mean, I can bring in a change to that.
Around that.
If you want me to, I can carry change, that's why I already gotta look at the others.
Well, really with that property.
Well, I imagine you're right.
And they don't even own Sundays anyway, so.
I'll bet, it's been, I'll miss in a long time.
If I'm saying like other places that wanna do it.
Yeah, probably been right.
Most people don't party Sundays. When churches are open.
I really.
I'm not that good for saying. That's private drink. Cause you have to, you have to pay, you have to pay the fee.
Isn't that one that kinda changed it up?
Is that something that you can do, or it's just cereal malt?
So, so you've got private clubs, and private clubs are already accepted from that restriction, okay? Then you've got, um, your cereal malt beverage, and then you've got your retail, which is like a liquor store for consumption off premises, and then you've got your, what they call liquor retail for consumption on premises, which would be like a typical bar. So, so you can apply those restrictions to some and not others, I mean, you're, you're kinda free to do that. The one thing that gives me pause is, it's my understanding, the state of Kansas is already preparing for this, is manufacturers are phasing out cereal malt beverages, they're just gonna stop making it.
Not really.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I've seen that.
So, if you're, if you're gonna do something, you might as well do it.
I just don't see issues with the church and, and places like that, I mean, most of the time when people are in church, it's in the morning before noon, people don't really start drinking around that time. I mean, I'd say, personally, I, I'd say across the board, just take it out, personally.
It's churches and schools, I mean, you can also still leave in schools, uh, and nominate churches.
I think that would be very fair, I mean, around here, we, I can't even see a place opening up around the school. I mean, that's what I'd say, is just, let's eliminate the whole radius deal across the board. And keep the school in there, I think, those are the two churches in schools.
Is there something that we can do to say, potentially, that they can't serve in those businesses during certain times? Like while church is in session, or something like that, you know what I mean?
Not unless it applies to.
I'm just trying to.
I think the only, the state, state law only allows location, I don't think.
Okay, I, just trying to cover all bases.
Yeah, we, we do Sunday sales, I think.
Right, so it's just, I think we need to be more universal across the system, because, you know, you can go to this place and do this, you can go to that place and do that, and, I mean, not all are treated the same in this sense, I mean, you, you can buy it on Sunday at a liquor store, or a, or a grocery store, or whatever, we can't buy it in a restaurant on Sunday, or during the rest of the week, anywhere.
What do you, how do you feel about it, you two?
Well, I mean, it sounds like to me, if we, even if we, you know, do away with the, the cereal malt, if, if we do away with the radius, and then they do away with making cereal malt, malt beverages, it's all liquor by the drink, then we're gonna have to change liquor by the drink here for too long, so now, now you're gonna be drink, uh, serving liquor, you know, whether that changes your mind or not, I, you know, I, I'm sure some people would, would not like that, but, um, do I see it causing a lot of problems? Probably not.
That's what I'm looking into, I really don't.
I'm sure some people would have a lot of problems with that, but.
Would that have to come to the citizens for a vote, or do y'all get to make the decision? I'm, I'm just asking.
It's, it's just.
I don't, I don't know.
It's policy, it's just a regular ordinance, it's not a charter ordinance that can be challenged or anything.
I don't have a problem with, with them serving alcohol, most, I mean, most people that go or are gonna have dinner over there, if they're gonna have a drink, they're not gonna go get stinking drunk, you know, they're gonna have maybe one, maybe one or two, and that's it. You know, so, I don't have a problem with, but I agree with Ryan, um, there's gonna be some pushback on some of this, there, there was last time, and not a lot, but there'll probably be some pushback this time again, you know, I think we need to, um, give the citizens of this, uh, community a chance to voice their opinion on this. Whether we like it or not, we need to listen to them, okay, but again, I don't have a problem with it, so.
What are your recommendations, John?
My thought is to, we can do it one of two ways, we, I can prepare a sample, where, so I'm kinda looking through, I might have to look at this entire act to see and eliminate conflicting language, but, um, I could provide it to council, and council can discuss it, and then put it on the agenda for possible adoption the following.
Okay.
So you're talking about May fifteenth?
Okay.
Uh, discuss it May first, um, and then vote on it May fifteenth, and that gives the opportunity for people to organize if they wanna organize, and, and talk to council members.
Works for me.
So at this time, we'll be putting off, uh, Pueblo Nuevo's application until
Yeah, I don't.
the date where we.
If, if somebody tells me, if the staff tells me it's within a hundred and twenty feet, then I don't think you can approve it anyways.
Right, I mean, it's right across the street, on first, it's right across the street.
Right across the street.
It's the width of the right of way, that's it.
The road is the dividing barrier between properties.
Yep.
Sure is.
I don't think it's gonna get out of control, but I think we should visit with the public to see what they think of it, you know, that's kinda what we're on here for.
Well, the thing is, the citizens that'll come in, they'll, they'll, uh, we'll have more citizens come in and say no to it than, than yes.
Uh, yeah.
They just, at the end of the day, a person's really gotta think of, if it'll be a problem or not.
Well, it'll be an opportunity for the people to at least be heard.
Mm-hmm.
Right, yeah.
And that's what it's all about.
I think that's further than just to.
I think if we vote on it, you know, now, I, I think it's a pride of majesty.
Yeah, that's not good, I agree, we need to, we need to make sure that we listen to what the community says.
Let them have a little bit of awareness.
Yeah, absolutely.
Before that's approved. So I would say draft, go ahead and draft up and check the entire act for conflicting language, and.
And we, what we can do is just.
I agree, yeah, that works for me.
I mean, if, if you want, I can, I can bring one in, and then if, if council wants changes, council can vote on changes to that ordinance, and, and it, you know, during the discussion, like, our logic procedure. Um, and then, um, the final version can be voted on on the fifteenth.
Okay, so we'll, we'll revisit it on the first meeting in May.
Let's go ahead, start from jumping out of that.
Okay. That actually answered two questions. From me. If nothing else for John. You know, you're doing a fine job, just wanting to pass that and get it over with. We like it speedy. It's perfect, thank you, John.
Okay, moving on to old business, well, number two. You fellers done anything there?
We, we haven't.
You better wait till fall, we better just kick it out to fall, I think we're both a little covered up.
You're not very speedy, Ryan.
We're gonna need to do some, we're gonna need to do some, some pretty long searching in order to get the, I, I, I think before we approach it with what we think is the right thing. We as well take it off there for now.
To me, you know, the, the amount of money that we spend, we just need to figure out how much it's getting used, how much maybe we can sell, and, you know, it's, it's gonna be a fairly large amount, but, um, but you just need to see if it's gonna be worth it.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll, it'll be a while.
Okay.
Moving on to city square, county square, whatever you wanted to find with us.
Well, so it turns out the county attorney is looking into it a little bit more, and he is looking at us leasing it instead of us purchasing it.
Should we vote for him, right?
Leasing.
For what hap? For what reason?
For us to keep maintaining. Why? That's my question, why should we lease that, the city takes care of it already.
When's the next commissioner meeting?
Tomorrow.
Do we have the opportunity, if we were to lease the property, do we have the opportunity to make, we wouldn't have the opportunity to make any rules or regulations on it?
It depends on what.
But he, he gave no reason why they wanna back, you got the commissioners that say they'll sell it, and then the lawyer doesn't wanna sell it, and I wanna know why.
He said that it, what I understood is the fact that it's, um, since it's county property, if they wanted to sell county property, they need to have a be, a sealed bid process. Just like if the city.
Let's just keep mowing it and forget it, what do you say?
That's only an issue, though, if somebody is going to complain about it, I guess.
But I've also had several conversations, um, a gentleman came in and brought me some information to do a little bit of research. Um, he had, part of his job was going through the commission books, so I have that, I haven't had an opportunity to go over there, he talked like they're not very organized anymore, um, so I will visit that, I had a phone call over the weekend about it. They were under the assumption that we had already leased it out for a hundred years, so I know John tried looking, the county didn't really have anything. I think they looked in newspapers.
Yeah, I'm not sure that would be filed, I guess they could've, this is kinda why I didn't wanna, if they wanted to sell it, they need to figure it out, this is.
Well, they're gonna be, they're gonna be at the meeting tomorrow, it's a bunch of crap. When you got the commissioner saying they'll sell it, it's the right thing to do is sell it to the city, it's a bunch of crap.
What were we gonna buy it for, a dollar? I'll go give five bucks, and just turn it over to the city.
Well, I think it was.
Let's just keep mowing it, forget where we brought it up.
All right, we got ten going, so.
Let's just keep mowing it and forget where we brought it up.
Well, they brought it up.
Neither one of them brought it up, so, wouldn't it?
I mean, we've maintained it forever, you know?
I just asked for permission and they brought up selling it, so.
Here's my, my problem, I'm not gonna put it up, is, we're talking about a, a city park, it needs to be protected.
Right, I can't.
I shouldn't go anywhere else.
Joe Blow down the street.
Right, a bid, a sealed bid, the purpose of that is for open government and, and.
Everybody knows it as a city square, and that's what it needs to say.
It's just, to me, that.
It's ridiculous.
Well, they even said something about potentially donating it, they couldn't even do that, supposedly.
But, I, I guess I'm, I'm lost, why they can't, they, they don't have.
County attorney put the stop.
Yeah.
No, I have a copy of the deed.
Yeah, they felt that.
He's just playing hard.
I mean, I.
My only concern, sometimes those deeds have reversionary clauses, it says if, if the county ever tries to get rid of it, then it reverts back to this, you know.
Original owner.
The original owner, or whatever, and some, sometimes those can be in violation of law, but that was my concern, and that's why I wanted to say before they did that, you know, maybe, I wanna look at the deed to make sure that you guys aren't losing your city park, and it, it wasn't any kind of clause in there, so.
I just, I need a good reason, this is a bunch of crap, it really is.
It's a square.
They shouldn't be at this hall.
Wow.
It's block seven, and it's funny, cause you can tell it's block seven because there's no records of block seven in our district deeds. So I guess that it was block seven.
There was a tanker, we don't admit leverage for a long time.
And they were, you know, all in favor of it, but I.
Well, nobody carries insurance on it, so they wanted to pass it off.
This is all because of the.
Well, that's where the issue came in, that is, why do we have to keep asking permission and permission and permission, I mean, it's the city square, I think we should have it. No, it's referred to as a city square. No, I know it's theirs, but it's referred, when somebody says the city square is what I'm getting at.
And it's all got brought up because I asked you guys for something, and you told me to go get permission, and why?
I mean, it was created, as far as we can tell, before the city existed, which was why it was given to the county. Otherwise, it probably wouldn't have been given.
I think the original intention was to build the courthouse there, and then, before they could get it done, the ladies had printed it up, and then they said, no, you're not putting a building here, and they put it over there.
I got a picture of windmill in there, the tank, or it was anything.
Yeah, I mean. So. Where are we at?
Just an update.
Do, do you have an approximate date that this guy was talking about the hundred year lease, do we have an approximate date that that was done?
Was eighteen eighty-two was the date?
Well, that eighteen eighty-two, hundred years, we've gone for eighteen eighty-two.
It may renew or something.
He wasn't very, I mean, it was just.
Well, I, I, the reason I'm asking is because he said he'd gone to the county's records and.
No, he did not, this is two different conversations.
Okay, all right.
So thoughts are just to
Go visit the commissioner.
See where.
I mean, that, cause you're at a standstill.
You want me to have a guy smoke this week, or you wanna wait?
I would too, you'd do.
So we should put the trees back.
I'm just updating you, Nita told me that the county attorney was looking into it to see if we could possibly lease it instead of purchase it.
No.
I'd say, I, I would personally say forget it, if they wanna sell it, let's sell it, if not, we're gonna have to work out an agreement where we're gonna have to receive some money for maintaining it.
Yep.
Um, someone needs to tell my people that they can or can't do their event.
Well, then we'll send them a mow your lawn letter. Cause they'll be in violation of city laws. We can play games, I think this is just a misunderstanding, and, and everybody okay with Esai representing the city at the meeting tomorrow to ask questions?
I don't have a problem with that, just, just don't go in there and start calling everything crap. That's all I'm asking, yeah.
Be a little more subtle with what you are right now.
I'll make the bell, man.
Alrighty, we've already talked about Pueblo Nuevo.
The water rights, I guess that was.
You skipped water rights and pest control.
And, uh, for water rights.
Yeah, I.
I was out of insomnia, and, and, up to the beginning of last week, I was working on other stuff, and did not get to it, but.
Just leave it on old business.
We'll leave it there, and then pest control. Jamie?
Um, you guys wanted the current contract, and I gave it to you.
So this is for the properties, the two copies, one is for the wit center, and one is for our building here, City Hall. And they.
The Centracon.
Okay, Centracon, and that's through Advance. The next, it expires end of May of this year, if we were wanting to do something different. Collectively, six hundred and ninety dollars for both buildings for the Centracon.
Correct.
So simply the renewal, so.
Well, this is just because we've received bids from the local business here, and this is who we're currently with, so we kinda wanted to see what we've been doing.
Where was he at for doing the same treatment?
Um, I think you were going, and, so this is the termite stations, and it would be, and I don't know if he can keep the ones, I mean, initially, it would be a price to get him, but then it would be, um, two, okay, hang on. What? I guess I need to double check on what proper, I think this might be all of.
The additional TPSB.
Uh, the termite bait system, I believe. So then, a year, it would be the one sixty-two and the two thirty-four. And I think that's for the wit center and for this building, cause I, I think I had them do exactly what we currently have.
So I see wit, wit center here.
But nothing's up there, so I think it's this building.
Wit center and, okay, so initially, it'd be eleven hundred dollars for that.
Thank you, guys.
Would be.
But then yearly, you'd be looking at.
One sixty-two compared to two ninety.
Six hundred and ninety. For the, for the two properties collectively, it's six hundred and ninety dollars for the wit center and the City Hall.
Right. I'm saying two hundred and ninety, his is one sixty-two.
Right.
And then the four, this is the four hundred, and he charges two thirty-four.
So Kansas Pass is cheaper.
So the two, the two prices is for the same service, just, he did it once, that, one at a time compared to, if we knocked it all out for a year and paid him, that's correct? So it's not the one thousand, it's just like.
Cause this is an annual agreement. This is an annual agreement for six hundred and ninety dollars. The initial, the initial is eleven hundred dollars, if he were to install everything, and then hit you for the yearly monitoring, then every year after, you'd just have that yearly monitoring, and it would be cheaper than this. What we're currently doing.
Right.
And this guy's local.
Yeah, so basically, he's putting in new monitoring systems, is what.
It's what it looks like.
It's kinda what the, what it cost the first year is, yeah, I think that.
You'd have an initial investment.
Do you guys have bug spray? Like, do you spray for bugs?
We spray no pesticides, only for mosquitoes.
Okay, I have ants in my office, I would really like you guys to entertain this one as well.
It's a cheesecake.
Okay. Okay, so.
There's different contracts on that stuff too, because like they have a contract at the power plant, and one at the swimming pool.
So this, this would be.
Oh, really?
Yes.
This would just.
For termites?
Well, I know about termites, but I know he sprays at the pool different kind, times a year, because I know she's had him out there.
Advance or?
Now, we have a termite contract at the power plant.
This is just to spray.
Yes, we do, right.
And set out for, so this is, this is just to, to spray one time, or is this to spray for the year? Or what, what is this for, cause then he's, he's gonna put rod and bait stations around the old Dylan's building and city office, and then sprayed the fire station and wit center and swimming pool in this office, is what it looks like to me, but I don't know for, is that a month?
I'm sure that's yearly, I don't know, how often do you spray?
I don't wanna know. I don't wanna know on that before I say anything. I don't wanna know on that before I say anything. This is, this is just to spray.
Ants in this, uh, uh.
It'd be for bugs, bug spraying for multiple buildings.
Did somebody ask for that quote or he just?
I had talked to him about this one, cause we got these in the mail and I just wanted to know what he would charge. And he said, do you got, like, what do they do? And I had no idea.
So you don't get any bills in for any spraying?
And it sounds like we have more that I'm not aware of.
We do have a separate contract at the power plant, I know, because a few years back, we found termites in that outside office building before we were done. We took the sheet rock off the wall on the two before we were gone. So he came out at that time and we, and we started taking, termites are really bad south of tracks anyway.
Who, who did Jeff, who came out at that time? Oh, it did.
Yeah.
What, our fire station, Jamie, do we pay any utilities there, like, doesn't the county pay?
No, we're talking about our, our shop.
Oh, the actual fire station.
Old fire station.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I guess we'll have to revisit this, cause we have more than, when I talked to Jeff before, he didn't. He didn't think that we had anything, so I'll need to try to go find stuff for the power plant too.
Guy would just assume do it all one company.
But this is all that, I mean.
With the winds.
This is all that we've seen.
Now, we have to sign the renewal of the.
By May thirtieth, so.
Okay, we've got a little time.
Yeah.
Not by May first.
I'll have it.
You could call Jeff down Hutch and ask him about that one.
Yeah, that might be easier.
It might've been a one-shot deal, I don't know.
Okay.
I do not know.
Could it be a deal where we?
I just know that he did it, cause I'm the one calling.
Is he the only one that's in the county that does it? To spray Kansas Pest, yeah.
As far as I.
He's the only one that I know of.
I think it'd be nice to stick with one person to do everything, if we can, if we don't have contracts, it'd be nice to maybe get three bids.
That might, that might be a one-shot deal then, I do not know.
If we can look into it and maybe Jamie, if he could get, I think it'd be nice to get three quotes and tell him, you know, if he can give us the best price to knock everything out. Just the absolute best price and then we, we can really compare that way, I think that would be really fair, just the closest people, it'd be nice if we had more people in the county, but let's. Ask him and maybe perhaps great bands, I don't know if Stafford has any, but would you, um, don't you guys think maybe checking with three bids?
I, I think two's probably good enough, Isai, but, uh, you know, like, we have someone here in town locally, I, I think we should go with him and he's cheaper and, I mean, we have two and I.
Couldn't imagine that deal down there being any more expensive.
And I, I think there was another council member talking about last meeting about, you know, maybe the city guys, um, treat the termites, I, I think we really need to have professionals do that.
Yeah, I'd rather not get my guys into it, we don't have to, I just.
Okay. I mean, that's, I think that's fair too.
Yeah, I, I, I really.
I like to watch for pennies, but.
Sure, sure.
But you have to support the people that support you too.
Yeah, right, I'd rather go with someone local too.
Would you guys like to see a quote on that first down there?
Yeah, I'd like to see everything, I'd like to see everything in close to one, yeah.
I still heard about that yesterday.
I think that's the pretty good thing to do, I mean, maybe he can cut us a better deal if we have everything going, so let, let's, let's do that, I say, so.
Ask for a quote for.
You want termite, termite ants spraying for every property?
Jeff, what's your thoughts?
Well, I mean, you got ants here, you got ants there, you got, you know, I don't know, I, I don't talk.
What about termites?
I would talk to Jeff, well, I, you know, there's certain places here in town that the termites are really bad, but, but now we have very little lumber left down there because most of that building's brick. You know, but the corners that did have wood were ate up. And I mean, ate up bad, so, you know, we still have a, we still have a, a garage building down there where we store stuff. My opinion is, if you're gonna spray for termites, I'd spray for all of them, I mean, don't, don't lose material or, or buildings over not wanting to spend a hundred dollars, you know, far as I'm concerned. And if you got an ant contract and that stuff, you're gonna spray one, spray all of them.
So would you, would you say having them quote to put the Centracon or whatever he uses?
Part of these, we did have those, I know there's bait stations here, I don't, I don't think we have any at the plant, but I'm not, he drilled some holes in the concrete when he was there. We don't have too many places you can really dig down there though, we got wire buried and everything else, but, but, uh.
Jeff, what's, what's other buildings, power plant, here, the wet center, I mean, like, that's on concrete or cinder block, I mean.
That's it, that's it, everything else is.
Park, maybe there's rough.
I mean, we got some wood over in the old fire station, but most of it's metal and block, you know, I mean, we do have some lumber in there, but.
So basically, we're just missing.
I don't know that we have, I don't know that we had any termite stuff up at the swimming pool, I think it's all brick, I don't think we have any, scout cabin, yeah, you're right, scout cabin. Yeah, we did have problems up there and have had in the past. So, yeah.
For spraying.
But other than that, other than that, I don't think anything. The wellhouses are all block, you know, so.
Yeah, I would have them check into the scout cabin too.
I create plants, metal.
Yeah, I don't know if you heard that or not, but.
I mean, you might, might wanna take the advice of the guy that's gonna spray, take him around and have him, you know, what would you do, what would you think we should do, you know, I, I don't, I'm not in that business, I don't know.
Okay, so.
I think it's a good idea to keep an eye on all of them.
So do we wanna have, do we wanna have Advance come out, quote same thing, just because, or do we just wanna have Jaren come out, quote everything for us and go from there?
I am more supporting the local stuff, but it is fair to get at least a couple quotes, even if he's a little higher than everybody else, I would, if it's a little higher. Pay for him to do it because he's local and he puts money back in the community, but I think it's fair to get too personal in him.
So let's get. I would, I would say have Advance, um, you know, bid the power plant and the scout cabin and have Jaren do the, Kansas Pest do the same thing and, uh. We already know he's cheaper on these two.
Yeah.
Then we can decide from there.
Okay, so get two quotes.
And then with the, I guess what they should bid is pest and termites, so they're quoting apples to apples?
Same. Exactly, they need to be quoting the same thing.
Termites and pest control.
I will research it and figure it out.
Right after you get back.
Be the best clerk.
After vacation.
Right after.
Alright, moving on from old business, any new business? No executive sessions, no other business, I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A motion and a second on the table, Bryant and Macias, any other discussion? All in favor, all opposed, carries three oh, meeting adjourned.